Good evening, welcome to the Carlisle Local School District Board Meeting on Monday, March 24th, 2025. This meeting is the meeting of the Board of Education and Public Affairs of Conducting the School District Business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a fine for public participation during the meeting. Will call?
Mrs. Morris.
Here.
Mrs. McIntosh.
Here.
Mr. Fuel.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Let's stand in the classroom.
............................................................
Mr. Fisher, would you please do the student and program recognition?
Yes. A little bit out of order. The first group that we're going to recognize is going to be our students who recently took place in Miami's Art Show. So we're going to have Mr. Lightfoot come up and Mr. Huber. They will talk a little bit about the programs.
All right, thank you to the Board of Education, Mr. Fisher, for all the opportunity to come in today and present some of our students' artwork. Wanted to take the opportunity to introduce the passion club real quick. He is our high school art teacher and been with the district for 20 years. And if you ever have the opportunity to stop by or walk past our display case, you can see a lot of our students' art work. Not only does he do a great job in his classroom as far as teaching our students arts, but from a cultural standpoint, he does a fantastic job in the club. So without further ado, just a line.
Carlisle Local Schools has been participating in the, I've got your work up here, has been participating in the Miami's Art Student Art Exhibition for thirty-some years now. I've had the honor to be part of that for the last twenty, we won a handful of first-place trophies and frequently done very well in terms of revenue throughout the various categories. And so we'd like to honor our students today who did not say any job of hand and formed a show. So when I call your name, come on up, some of you, I was able to make work soon for everything started. I've got it right here. Jay Atkins. Come on down, Jay. Come on down. And take your stuff.
Students, if you come up, try to come up on this side, that's okay. Um, once you get your stuff, if you want to, go back here because we can give you the picture.
Logan Brown's Honorable Mention in the portrait category. Bella Cochran, I know she's not here tonight, fourth place in the portrait category.
Painting, I looked at the back, sorry, it's painting, it's back there. How about Maya Howard, first place in landscapes?
No Lamb. No Giuliana, but she did take first place in the animals category. And last but not least, and she doesn't have her work here tonight for us because it sold. So we've got an actual sale from one of our student pieces. So Alyssa Gowns, first place in the adventure art category. Last but not least, Judge Johnson, four place figures. It's worth mentioning that it's not just our school that participates in this, it's not just them that participate against each other or anything. There are seven, eight, nine other schools, other districts that participated in this particular art exhibition. So we do have a lot of really good competition.
Everybody around, applause for all. Mr. Lightfoot, uh, we actually, we actually last, and perhaps was a big part of it, last Friday, we were at one of our PD days. We actually did some different things for teachers and both Pat, Erica, and the instructor or the whole actually did an art class as well, so we could set up a true squad, we love that. Doug. I do appreciate all the work, Pat, this is the first time we've recognized where kids have done this, but certainly where it makes it happen, they go against seven, eight other schools within the area. I had a chance to actually go to the Miami's Art Show exhibit, I think it was on Sunday they did, a week, a weekend ago. It was so cool seeing a lot of kids on the floor there, so off-town. So thank you for all of the dedication.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Offsky came up to recognize our winter sports athletes who received the awards. And then students, same thing, the art students, let of course, as your names are called, glad to have you come up and line up again behind the board members and get a picture of the podium. So.
Good evening. First of all, I just want to thank our, not only our student athletes, but our parents and coaches for all the, all the work they do throughout the season, throughout each long season. Parents were transported for just, you know, picking up the needs of the student athletes. I just really appreciate you and I know it's a long season, winter season, and we are done with it now, but it's still in the years and I just appreciate again, our coaches and student athletes. We have some SWBL recipients, more recipients that were recognized, if you don't know the SWBL website, those are what we're going to go through tonight, I've got a few of my coaches here to help me hand these out. We're missing some student athletes, we have other schools going on, baseball, I've got a chili coffee among other club schools, some student athletes participate in. So, boys basketball, Chris Giles, if you're here, I'll call your name, come on up and I'm sure the board will be there. Blake Lawson, SWBL Player of the Year, fourteen hundred and thirty-six career points, new ball scoring record. Brandon Broder, he's a baseball.
Do you guys want to, if you want to come up this way, it's okay.
He was SWBL first team, one thousand three points, third place, really came throughout, it's rare that you see a stretch of scoring like he did to complete the season, so congratulations, Brandon Broder. Nate Ross, SWBL second team, he's also on here, baseball. Drew Conker, SWBL often mentioned, he's not here, but basketball, congratulations. Boys basketball, Rick Gill, SWBL second team, not in attendance, and Mackenzie Shackelford, SWBL often mentioned, also not in attendance tonight, but we have some bowlers here, Will, Albert, we have addition to district qualifier, SWDAB Boys Bowling. Just in our first year, bowling, bowling was awesome to watch. It was really an experience this year, the teamwork, the camaraderie, just unbelievable. I really enjoyed it. Those that came out and watched, I'm sure agree with me, very enjoyable, great teamwork, encouragement, just excellent. Ethan Ham, not here as a baseball, he was a addition district qualifier, SWBL, SWDAB Boys Bowling, and Andy Steppel. She was also an district qualifier for the SWBL, congratulations. Coach Ed Clark, Wesley, again, great turnout, we host the league meet here each year and he did a fantastic job, and Chris, and boosters, everyone else, really put on a great show. And we had some placers in that, Urban Atmar, second place, SWBL. He was also a sexual champion in district qualifiers. Trent Snodgrass, second place, SWBL district qualifier also. Anthony Third Place, SWBL Sexual Champion, District Qualifier. For girls wrestling, Abby Smith, Sexual Champion, District Qualifier. Another first year. And one more thing, we have a signing here, we hope you decide in the year for athletes, student athletes that are looking to participate in college, and we hold our first one in February, and the next one on May fifteenth, it's a great event, I encourage you to show up here, six p.m. fifteen to May. And this, this first event in February, we had Brandon Cowherd, Ethan Ham, Jeremy Ham, Matthew Harrison, Blake Lawson, Brandon B. Ham, Brendan Rowe, Cooper Steppel, all signed. So great event, May fifteenth is our next one.
Okay, at this point, we're going to move on. If you are more than welcome, for those that came for the awards part, you can stay if you'd like, or you're more than welcome to head out this time. Okay, this time, we'll move on to the student program. She's going to come up and talk about the donation program that she put together in
I'm really glad you guys moved the microphone down here, because I was trying to mentally prepare for being up on stage. Okay, well, I'll try to keep this short and sweet, I just wanted to come talk about, this was a good opportunity to come up and talk about the Donation Drive Competition and the Basketball Clinic that most of the schools participated in a couple weeks ago. It was the elementary school, the intermediate school, and the junior high. As most of you probably know, this is our sixth year doing the Donation Drive Competition. Kids bring in donations and supplies to the Hope House Home and Shelter in Middletown and the Franklin Food Factory. We also do the Donation Drive at Franklin and invite them to the Basketball Clinic as well. Basketball Clinic, this was our fourteenth year doing it, and the first year we got twenty kids to come out to it, and it was one day. This year we had a hundred and fifty-seven kids come out over the span of two days. The first day was a hundred and twelve kids, and there were so many of them, we had to split them up between two gyms because it was so chaotic. I had to have Quentin and Mike come up because kids would have trouble hearing me. But overall, we brought in tons and tons of donations. Mr. Fisher told us he wanted to put them in the conference room, the admin conference room, and we very, very quickly just absolutely took it over. So thank you for letting us leave that room and for letting us run the Donation Drive again this year, I hope you were able to see how, how much of an impact it makes for a lot of people.
I think that's a different decision.
Yeah, I figured, I warned him at first, I was like, there's a lot, I'm telling you, there's a lot. But overall, I hope that you guys are able to see the impact that it makes. We have kindergarteners, first and second, third graders coming out to join our Basketball Clinic, and for some of them, it was their first introduction to basketball, and we were happy that the boys basketball team was able to bring them into that life and kind of show them how fun that is, and hopefully bring it into our programs as well. But other than that, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to do this every year. I had a list of like twenty-seven people to thank for this, but I don't think you guys want to sit around and listen to all of those right now. But if you guys helped with it, and some of you guys are even sitting on this stage right now, and helped make it the success that it was, thank you so much. Especially Mike Wilder, Jennifer Dear-West, or Dany Turner, they're always so amazing about spreading the word and pushing it out there to the community, whether that's doing one call or putting it on a final report, etc., they're always really awesome. And then Melissa Fisher, Dan Johnson, and Courtney Fogel reached out to me to see if National Junior Honor Society and Student Council could help with it, and I was really thankful for that. So they went around and collected all the donations, and then Brian Swandell and Justin Ward had their classes come down and help my dad load up the donations into the truck, and he would never have been able to do that myself. So it was amazing, it was, thank you so much to all those people, and even more if I, I know that I definitely left some people out because they're lost. But I just wanted to thank you guys, say I hope that you guys are still and help us do it again, there are rules to come, so thank you.
Tomorrow, I think I have to schedule a little bit of something on social media, have a little bit of pictures of everything. I walked into the conference room, I went and looked at everything, I walked like Walmart or the store. I didn't, for visitor comments, I didn't, there was anybody else, so I didn't see anyone else. If there are any other visitor comments, I'd stop. I did mention, and I'm ready to go back, too sorry, as I said, I was more excited about moving on, administrative reports, you should have all those at this time. Our administrators are here, unfortunately, Miss French, Miss Goodwin, we have some history right here, we should have everything in front of you. Any questions on anything from any of the reports? We can move on to number six.
Mr. Vassler, would you please give the treasures report?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Morris. First thing on action items, audit updates, finally, as of today, I've got my last notification from the Ohio State Auditor's Office, the audit has been filed, everyone has signed up on it, and if you are so inclined, I can send you a copy if you'd like, but I can summarize what's the most important parts to me. There's no citations, and it's a clean off. So I printed my certificate again to hang on the wall, so actually balance on the wall that I'm hanging. But it's done, so finally, we get to the end of March, and the audit is finished, and we'll start the development of the council law. It seems like it's a, it's a year-round process, but it's a last year, which should be a big today or should be a little. Should I stand up on my knees? So with that, I'll move on to the action items. First thing is I need approval for the bench from the last regular scheduled board meeting, which was February.
Motion to approve meeting minutes, second, first by Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Milligan, will call?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Next, we have the financial report, which is part of your package. No real surprises, we'll move on. If you have any questions, I'll hand approval.
Motion to approve the financial report?
Second.
First by Ms. McIntosh, second by Ms. Milligan, will call?
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And then next, every March, we accept the tax and rates as they're determined by the budget commission of Moore County. So the process is, we do the tax bracket in the January board meeting, we have a tax budget hearing, what's called a school county in February, and county auditor gives us our rates, and we approve those in March. So if there's any questions on the approval for the tax amounts of rates?
Motion to approve the tax amounts of rates, second by Ms. Milligan, second by Ms. Miller, will call?
Ms. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
And then lastly, I need a board to approve a donation of a thousand dollars from the campus, Todd one, to the pro idol drama club.
Motion to approve donation?
Second.
First by Ms. Miller, second by Ms. McIntosh, will call?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Milligan?
Yes.
Thank you, that's my report for the morning.
Mr. Fisher, would you please give the superintendent's report?
Five things to talk about real quick. First of all, congratulations to our junior high drama club, you did not get a chance that we would get a March fourteen, or March sixteen, to see the Addams Family, you missed the great show. I was thoroughly impressed, I told Kenzie, Lisa, and my manager, I've seen a lot of plays, I've never seen junior high kids do as well as they did, and it was simply amazing. Wish my seat was a little bit better, I was hoping at the tombstones I would help my principals. I did set pictures, I didn't know it was going to cause that much stress, but it sure was a good, good job, and some dedication to our drama directors, so congratulations to them. Want to talk a little bit, we had our second to last PD day on last Friday, a little different twist this time, we did a teachers, teaching teachers PD, it turned out great, we had twenty different sessions, actually totally had about sixty different sessions, where teachers had just offered opportunities, things along technology, as I mentioned earlier, some funding, taught some staff, I wanted to hear the ball, just trying to break away from the norm, it's still not actually a question of them, we give them instruction, appreciation, but there were a ton of different topics being offered, which I'll talk by our teachers, so it was a wonderful day, so thank you to all of those staff members who stepped out of their comfort zone. It's easy to teach kids, both when you're teaching your colleagues, it's a little more intimidating. So our teaching group, great job, and initially a lot of great positive reviews, some of the problems we're going to continue to deal with, I'm not sure we move on. Want to give an update on the track, we actually should be receiving our final drawings on the track from any day now, I received an email this morning from the Moats Group, so I would say we should have an update, they're about ninety-five percent based on what the email said, completed with drawings, so they expect those back, but the start date, of course, I told you, they're at seven, so we're looking to pick everything off, so pretty much staying on target. Our next big focus would be then looking at where we would require shop in this area, and also picking up the equipment, so that we can, I would be, I would start. I wanted to congratulate, we had five students last night recognized at the NDC National Technical Honor Society. It's Isabella Barnes, Justin Bowden, Emma Campbell, Ayla Nibbler, and Tyne Powell, all recognized, conducted it to their honor society. But I think the thing that is even more important, the way CTC does it is they recognize a CTC teacher that admits something, and they also recognize a staff member from a home school. And this year was Mike Brown, Ryan Swandell, Sarah Ward, and Susan Cox, and Sarah in particular, and Ryan, if your high school teacher wants to think about your work, or you want to go out and think about it in your middle school, in your elementary, it just shows the impact those two individuals had, five, six, seven, sometimes eight years later. So I wanted to commend them, and also recognize some students. And lastly, obviously, today was our first day with Deputy, or it's going to be called Officer Dave, he was crucified very quickly, so there was a car accident outside Jamaica, which luckily, the city actually came back at the school. Today was his first day, great day, kids were very excited to see him, I know all the buildings did announcements, the city of Carlisle posted a funny picture with him, they knew that he was welcoming his first day back at school, gave his likes and things like that. But Dave, I believe, just listening to Dave and talking with him, it's going to be a great asset for us, so very excited about that. But Dave, it'll be a great, just listening to Dave and talking to Dave, it's going to be a great asset for us, so very excited about that. So, that is my non-action items. Other than action items, number one, we need a motion for order claims. The first is, we have our first reading for our policies, and then there are also two that are being rescinded, refuted, and rewritten into policies. Letter B is, and C are to approve our M W's between Cincinnati State and Sinclair for our College Report Plus classes. And then letter D, believe it or not, we're already planning activities for the twenty-five to the sixth school year. This will be to approve our eighth grade Washington D C trip for November nineteenth, or twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, for our eighth graders.
Motion to approve the action items?
Second.
First by Ms. McIntosh?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Milligan? Go call.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Number two is, we have two retirements. One is our longtime elementary principal secretary, Phyllis Lilly, who we're retiring for her position as a junior sixth. I want to thank her for her service, and also Barb Lizer, who's been in the district for a number of years, who retired in the sixth.
Motion to approve the retirement. So, of course, you have Ms. Milligan. Second by Ms. Milligan. Go call.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
I will add that I keep everybody updated on the, which means everything is moving on. We've had quite a few internals and baronies right now. Number three is a classified resignation of Donna Burke Kent, affected by the private enforcement, she's an education.
Motion to approve the resignation? First by Ms. McIntosh. Second by Ms. Miller. Go call.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Number four is an employment of two subs, one is an education unit sub, and one is an education unit secretary sub.
Motion to approve. First by Ms. Milligan. Second by Ms. McIntosh. Go call.
Ms. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And the last are seven supplemental appointments. Two, one for this year, two actual couple for this year, two for the spring, and three for next fall.
Motion to approve the supplemental appointments? First by Ms. Milligan. Second by Ms. McIntosh. You did.
I did as well, so.
I heard, I heard. Go call.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
That's my report for this week.
Hallie? Yeah, so we do have some things going on. There's a house, House Book One Thirty-Five, if anybody is perceiving material. And it is super limited number of hours in the school districts, all open to standard, non-public, by twenty-seven hours for part-time kindergarten, and we can create for K-12. We don't know what this is going to happen, or if, but see what it does. It'll be okay. Currently are at a thousand seventy-five hours, and the year next is a thousand one. So, next, we would have just House Book One Thirty-three. Right now, we do not have designated party, we run the school board, and it may have to feature. The next thing is S B nineteen, and this is math intervention services, and this is going to require school districts, pursuits for a limited level of skill to have interventions beginning of next school year, to make sure that they're improving their math skills. Then we have one of five, wearable painting devices, this was brought up earlier this year, or last spring, I can't really remember which one it was. It's going to require company, they turn non-public schools to, again, next year, where we're in, wearable paint, paintable waters, the teachers can instantly, uh, alert if there's an issue. This is also a list as well, that we have, we talked about, there's different kinds, there's some of them are raised, and some of them are not, and some of them are even as small as a badge.
I will say that so far, the things that Ms. McIntosh talked about, none of them would be funded by state.
Yes.
There was a district that actually, a bigger district that would get this angry, uh, badge, with, uh, wearable devices, and it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so it's not a huge amount.
So, we have that. And that's all, there's some other ones that are still happening, like the school base, uh, School Bus Safety Act, I can't remember if you're here for that one there. That is the one that's going to find drivers who pass a stop bus, which most certainly should happen. And that's all.
They do, but this would actually increase by, it would increase by, I think it would also increase by number, it would increase by, again, it's going to be due to your drivers, most of them.
It's a long supply. And, uh, we have licenses. It's a fine of three hundred, I think.
Does a five hundred dollars per day, and seven, seven fifty-five. And, uh, that's the first time, so it's almost, sort of, it's.
Jerry, how many, I'm not, sorry, sorry. How many, do you, how many, like, five, five, is?
We had, uh, what do we say so far? Thirty-eight of the back right, they're alive, and they're all off the road. That's why they can call, the one he has on, he was stopped, he was, it happened.
And we do report them, and we, every day, we're doing much quicker losses, we're just, uh, we do doubt, uh, he met, which is basically a red job.
Are they doing that when they cross the, the soccer policy, or?
So, it's a bus will provide for, uh, stops added. There's a turn lane, there's a, they don't have to stop. I think that's a huge, but, uh, they had to stop. All food, bus will obviously, uh, decent for a township, bus in for a county constitution. But they're not, of course, they all do, they do that, but now they're using the U S K backs.
Kelly?
No, they have the regular working on the eleventh of March, that's what we have, and they do the national.
Any old business? Any new business? And a mushroom printer?
Second.
First by Ms. McIntosh?
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller?
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Time for six, thirty-one.